So I'd like to begin by saying thank you so much to everybody who's joined us this evening for our candidate forum for the Weslaco ISD School Board candidates. My name is Barbara Garza and I'm the president and CEO for the Weslaco Area Chamber of Commerce. And we're very excited that you've joined us today to learn more about this evening's candidates in Places 4 and 5 for the Weslaco ISD School Board. The reason the Chamber puts on events such as these is to help our voters become more informed of the platforms of the candidates for these particular offices. And so, we thank you again for taking time to come and learn about the candidates that are running for these particular places. As part of the Chamber, we are a nonprofit, private entity and we serve the business community and the community at large. We focus on supporting small businesses through a variety of programs and activities. And candidate forums are one of the activities that we typically host in efforts to provide information to our business community and community at large. So again, we're very grateful that you're here and again, we're very grateful to all the candidates and their willingness to be here and share with you about their platforms. In regards to the Weslaco Chamber of Commerce, our mission is together with our partners, we provide leadership to advance a prosperous economy that enhances quality of life in our community. And events such as these do just that, as they inform our community of the constituents for these particular places. Tonight's event, we do want to remind you that there will be no endorsements allowed today as our goal is to provide an avenue for candidates to share their platform and speak to our members and community at large. We're glad that you're here. We do ask that if you can please silence your phones to respect our candidates and their responses this evening. And I do want to remind you that tonight's candidate forum is not a debate, but rather a presentation-style event. And we say this each time because we will not be entertaining questions from the audience. However, we will have a moderator who will be asking questions to our candidates this evening and we'll be hearing their responses. So again, I do want to ask that the audience do silence their cellphones again to support our candidates this evening. Tonight's moderator is an Assistant Professor of South Texas College, Ms. Vanessa Mora. I want to thank her for taking time to be our moderator today as she will be asking the questions to our candidates this evening. And once again, I do want to thank all of our candidates for taking time to be with us today and share with us your platform. At this time, I would like to welcome and introduce Ms. Vanessa Mora.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. I'd like to thank Ms. Barbara and Mr. Montes for inviting me here to be your moderator today. Like she said, my name's Vanessa Mora. I am from South Texas College. I am Assistant Professor with the Criminal Justice Department. We educate students in our program to prepare them for careers that encompass the criminal justice field, including municipal, state, and federal law enforcement and criminal justice careers. With that in mind, enough about me, I'd like to at this time go ahead and give each of the candidates an opportunity to begin with their opening statements. So I'll go ahead and I'll begin here with Ms. Dr. Rodriguez. You can go ahead and begin with your opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. Before I get started, I want to thank the Chamber and all those involved in putting this forum together to give the community an opportunity to meet the candidates there. My name is, my name is Dr. Jaime Rodriguez. I am your current Weslaco ISD Place 4 trustee. Tonight, I hope to earn your support by answering some key questions that will be asked here in this forum. I am the son of Alfredo and Marisela Rodriguez. My father is a retired school teacher from here from Weslaco and my mom is a current Weslaco ISD employee for almost 50 years now as a school nurse. And they're the reason why I'm here today. You know, I'm a lifelong resident of Weslaco, born and raised, and very proud of that. Very proud of, you know, the fact that I've, you know, lived here all my life. You know, I am a product of the Weslaco school system, as were my parents, my wife Jessica and my three children, Jacob, Eliana, and Josh. They're all, they all excelled academically and athletically here with the school district and took advantage of a lot of the offerings that they had their time here. Right now, they're furthering in their education at University of Houston and the University of Texas in Austin. As for myself, I'm an optometrist and I've been practicing for 20 years, over 20 years now. And I have, my current practice is in Weslaco and I have one in San Benito also. You know, for me, as a member of the community, as a member of the school board, it's always been a lifelong goal to serve my community, to give back to the community. And we've done this in many ways, whether it's in scholarships, in mentoring students, in sponsorships, supporting civic organizations. And I look forward to continue to do this. This started way before I was a school board member and it'll continue after I stop my service as a school board member. Again, my name is Dr. Jaime Rodriguez and I am asking reelection for Weslaco ISD Place 4.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Ms. Trevino?
Yes, hello, everybody. My name's Dr. Edi Trevino, E.T. Just a little bit about me, I was in the Army Reserves for six years, many years ago. I take a lot of pride in that and having served my country. I'm a mother of five children, all of them, my three boys have actually graduated from Weslaco schools. I have one at West Point, the other one at Kansas, in Kansas at Ottawa University, and another one of my sons who's a president of his own company. I believe in education. I've been a teacher for 25 years. I'm bilingual, hablo español, I'm very proud of that. I believe that when we reach a time in our lives when we're able to give back to the community, that we do that. And you know, that's why I'm running. Now, my lived experiences have taken me all over the United States in the military. I was in, lived in Missouri, I lived in Virginia, I lived in El Paso as I attended UTEP. My doctorate is in education. My work takes me all over the state of Texas where I'm able to empower districts and I'm able to see best practices, what other districts are doing. I'm very proud of my family, I'm very proud of my culture, I'm very proud of my language, and I love Weslaco. My children were born in Weslaco many years ago and you know, I'm a firm believer that when a community embraces you, that it's only logical that we give back. So I'm very excited to be here and very grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trevino. Ms. Sanchez?
Good evening. I'm Paula Sanchez and I'm on my, my board, or actually on my postings, you see Paula Mata Sanchez, and I'm very proud of that. I'm seeking a position for the Weslaco School Board Place 5. I am married to my husband of 35 years and I have two young adult children, Ashley and Austin. I'm a third-generation Weslaco native and have lived in Weslaco all my life. I am a graduate of Weslaco High School, class of 1985. Currently, I'm an adult education supervisor for Region 1 and hold a master's degree in educational leadership. I also have worked with many, in many aspects in my education field, 24 years in education. I've worked as a human resource secretary, an office clerk, an instructional assistant, a coach, assistant principal, campus behavior coordinator. I handled a lot of the discipline in my campus. LPAC administrator, attendance and truancy administrator. I was in charge of the maintenance and custodians and served in several committees when I was in the education field with the school district. I was in ARD site-based committees and superintendent advisory committee. And also, I was also an English department head. I've also worked with, I believe that I'm a very strong advocate of students and that's who I am. I have a passion for my education and for the education of our students. That is, that is what empowers me, is to move them forward. And hopefully, as your candidate and hopefully as your future board member, that's what I want to do, is empower those children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Mr. Castillo?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Castillo and I'm running for school board place 5. I was born in Weslaco, I was raised in Mercedes, but I came to Weslaco as fast as I can. So professionally, what I do, I'm an attorney. I represent school districts all over the state. Again, it's a position that helps me see best practices at the board level. For a living, I represent school boards and superintendents. I advise them on a daily basis. I have the honor and privilege to be able to see what's going on in all other places of the state. And if elected, if you guys give me the opportunity to come to Weslaco, my goal is to bring those best practices here and to try to keep the progress moving in Weslaco ISD. I think together we can do it. I think Weslaco is right on the verge of becoming great. If you look at their academic accountability ratings, they're in 89, they're right there. All they need is a little bit of direction and I have the professional experience and knowledge to be able to do that. So if, if elected, that's my goal, that's my plan, and that's what I want to do for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Mr. Sanchez? Sainz, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Homer Sainz. My father is Judge Sainz, my mother is Maria Sainz. We've been in this community over 50 years. I attended Donna High School, graduated from Pan Am. I'm currently working as a system engineer at USA in San Antonio, but I can work remotely. Six years ago, I moved back to the Valley and I've been living here in Donna, I'm sorry, Weslaco for the six years. My wife, Anna Castillo Sainz, she's from here. We have a lot of history here, a lot of service here. I'd like to bring that service to the community. As soon as I moved back into the Valley, the first thing I did was join the Rotary because I believe that that's where my service is. My service is given to the community, helping the community out, and I believe that I can be a great school board member in making decisions that are right for the students, right for the faculty, and right for the district. I think that what we have now is a good direction, we just need better practices to follow that through. And with the students that we have, we can go forward and move Weslaco into a better place. I would appreciate your vote and support for Place 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sainz. Ms. Quintanilla?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diana Quintanilla. I have about 18 years in school district administration and various aspects. I'm currently a child nutrition director. I've been a supervisor for safety and risk department, putting together plans of action for emergencies. I've been a school district accountant for about 10 years. Pretty much everything that comes in and out of the school district, I've been a part of it. Been part of several audits conducted by the state, locally, federal audits. I, like Homer, graduated from Donna. I was born in Weslaco, raised in Donna, graduated from Donna. I've been living in Weslaco for about 25 years. My mom was a teacher here in Weslaco for 38 years, she's now a retired teacher, as is most of my family. I come from a family, I love a lot of Weslaco ISD retired teachers. My daughter's a Weslaco East graduate. And one of the main reasons I'm running is because I want to make a difference. You know, I like to advocate for due process, for fairness, for having every child be on the same line, starting line, pretty much. You hear of those that fall through the cracks and those that feel that others are entitled. I'd like to just say that I'd like to be that advocate for those students that don't have a voice in the system. I want to bring them all up to par to where the minute the day starts, they're all starting at the same line. Many don't know what they face at home financially, mentally, physically, financially, and I'd like to be a voice for all those students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Quintanilla. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and begin with the questions. I'd like to remind the forum here that you have one minute to answer the question. If you could just keep your eye on the timekeeper. And I'm going to go ahead and begin with the first question. What has motivated you to run for office? So I'm going to go ahead and start here with Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. So my main reason is simple, is to make a difference. And to me, being on the school board gives me that opportunity to make a difference for our students, for educators, and for our community as a whole. But you know, it didn't just start with being on the school board. Like I said in my intro, I've, you know, going back to before my school board years, you know, I made it a goal to give back, to give service in any way possible, just to make sure that we can grow as a community and in my situation as a school board trustee, make a difference for, and impact a lot of lives throughout the community and make our community a better community. And that's the reason why I'm motivated to run for school board.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez. Dr. Trevino?
I was motivated to run and I actually have a list. It starts with micromanagement of the district in the last eight years, in the last two terms. You can find those in the Weaver Report. You know, we go back to funding of our teachers. Inappropriate funding, our teachers should have been paid and staff. Instead of going back eight years, we have to go back only four years. $40 million during my opponent's term between 2017 and 2019 did not go to critical improvements. It actually led to high-interest loans. High-interest debt loans from 2017 to 2019 that are causing everybody here that's a taxpayer over $2 million a year, okay? Over 16 schools need roofs and new AC systems, it's going to cost about $60 million. Grievances that have not been heard, counselors that are understaffed and under, the budget is not there. A tax rate that was mismanaged and may hurt the taxpayers in 2023, 2024.
Thank you, Dr. Trevino. Ms. Sanchez?
The reason that I'm running for school board is because I see missed opportunity. Weslaco has always been a city that shines and I believe that Weslaco has already lost some of that shine with the stuff that's going on with the school and the school board right now. It upsets me to the point where I get calls daily about the hiring practices. I want to make those, I was part of the Weaver Report, I'm on page 17. And that for me was a key reason why I'm running because some of these, we have a lot of qualified people here in Weslaco and we're looking elsewhere. And for me, that for me speaks volumes. We need to start looking at Weslaco first before we do anything else, looking outside to other districts, to hire other employees from other districts or people, personnel from other places. Weslaco should be first and we need to give opportunity to our teachers for advancement. We also need to give fair raises and make sure that we're paid accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Trevino. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Sanchez? Mr. Castillo?
Thank you. So my motivation to run for office is advocacy for students. I've unknowingly made advocacy for students my life's work. As soon as I was eligible to run for public office, I did. I ran when I was 18 for school board in Mercedes. I won. I served for five and a half years. After that, I went to law school and became an attorney that represents school districts. So for the past 15 years, I have been working with school districts, I have sat on the Board of Trustees, and I have been representing schools as an attorney for the past 10 years. So every day, every single, every single thing that I do is to advocate for the public student in Texas. And what I want to do is I want to bring that to Weslaco because to me, students are first. And that's the whole purpose for a school board, is to advocate for students. And that's what I want to do. That's what motivated, that's what motivated me to run.
Thank you. Mr. Sainz?
Well, what motivated me to run was to serve the community. I'd like to bring and build trust with the community, with the district, with the personnel, so that we can provide better services for our teachers and for our students, that we can have programs which will help build better trust between us and the board and the teachers and the whole district and the whole. I think that being here for the students, for the teachers, is where we begin. And I think that having some honesty, integrity, and being accountable for some of our choices will be important for us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quintanilla?
What motivated me to run is I have, you know, a lot of friends and family that are teachers and it seems like the past two and a half years have just been, I guess, the worst in, the worst two and a half years in most of our lifetimes. And what kind of gets me the most is to hear a teacher, a friend of mine, that's so motivated to teach, lose their spark. You know what I mean? You know, they just, they don't want to teach anymore, they want to look for another profession. And it seems that everywhere you go, you hear the same thing again and again. I wish I wouldn't have been a teacher, I want to look into doing something else. And I feel that as a member of this community, if I can be part of that change and that process, then I would be giving some of myself back to the community. But at the end of the day, if you want the students to succeed, you have to have happy teachers teaching those students, so.
Thank you, Ms. Quintanilla. I'm going to go ahead and ask the next question and I'm going to start with Ms. Quintanilla answering first and work our way this way. How does your profession experience relate to education or what contribution do you plan to make to the district that relates to your professional experiences?
As much as we don't want to face it, at the end of the day, everything revolves around funding. No one works for free and we do not want to be buying supplies out of our own pocket. I have been in the trenches and have led or participated in over 20 audits for compliance and the uses of our finances. I know how the accounting works and how the funds can and cannot be used. I have the experience in all the management areas of a school district. I have supervised over 180 employees at one time and I'm well aware of human resource policies and laws. I am about equal pay and know how to advocate to level out the compensation plans, to make sure that employees feel appreciated and in turn, increase the district's morale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
In my current profession as system engineer, one of the things that we do is we make decisions based on logic. Not an emotion, but what's best for the community, what's best for the, for the district, what we can do to make, provide better services and how we can move forward. Not looking at individuals, but looking at it as a business and saying, we can, as a board, right, create good policies and make things better for the district. Starting with teacher salaries, retaining teachers, and making sure that we have the right people in place to make the right decisions.
Thank you. Next candidate?
My professional experience is directly on point. I go to school board meetings every night, except for the Tuesday when this board meeting is, when Weslaco ISD school board meetings are. For example, today, I did an agenda review, preparing for another, for preparing for a board meeting for another district. I review contracts on the personnel side, that's 80% of my practice. I deal with personnel issues all the time. Another area of expertise that I have in my law firm is governance, board governance specifically, school board governance. So my professional experience is directly on point and the reason I'm running and the reason I wanted to run is I wanted to bring that knowledge and experience that I've gained over the last 10 years representing school boards all across the state, bring it to Weslaco ISD for free. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
Yes, ma'am. In my case, I bring a wealth of knowledge in education. I have 24 years' experience in all assets of education. Like I said before, I've been an HR secretary, I know about HR. I've been an office clerk, I know about what office clerks go through. I've been an assistant, assistant principal, I've been a teacher, a coach. I have a lot of different areas where I have touched students in many, many different ways. I'm an advocate, like I said, for students. Currently, I'm working for Region 1, I'm an adult ed supervisor. And that is very important because not all students want to, want to, can graduate because life happens. This is why we have also Region 1, we also have GD classes, free GD classes for students. And we also do IET classes for students so that way they can become, become important people in the workforce. So again, we also advocate for students at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
Well, as I mentioned before, my experience, having been a teacher for 25 years in the private and public sector, having been an administrator, having served in the United States military, all of that plus life experience. You know, as teachers, we have to know the pedagogy and administrators, we have to know federal funds, Title III funds, Title I funds. And that's all important to know on a school board because if somebody's asking you to allocate funds, you have to know if that is the correct information that they're giving you or if it's incorrect information. And I think that's why we are where we are right now, that we, where the business office has admitted to mismanagement of taxpayer dollars because the board is not informed on, it goes beyond the classroom and goes beyond working with kids. It has to do with legal aspects as well.
Thank you. Next candidate?
For myself, you know, I think I have a perspective of being a business owner and being a healthcare provider. And I think in that regards, I can bring something to the table as a board member. You know, I'm used to running a business, a practice, dealing with employees and morale. And as a, as a healthcare provider, I have firsthand knowledge as to what it takes to become a doctor or, you know, something, some profession. So in my daily interactions with students who come through my office, we discuss, you know, what the opportunities are, what the district has to offer. And I think in my situation, I have that unique opportunity to approach it from the business side and from a healthcare provider. And in every conversation that, you know, I have with, you know, our student patients, you know, we, I encourage them to go to school, stay in school and, you know, get their education, come back and support Weslaco.
Thank you for your responses. Our next question is on the topic of school safety regarding gun control and terroristic threats. How would you utilize your term in office to address this growing concern for educators and families? And I'll go ahead and begin here with Dr. Rodriguez.
So this is definitely a big topic right now in today's world and as a school district and being on the board and seeing what we can do, there's different avenues. Right now, we utilize school resource officers throughout the district. There's also the option of having a school district police force. There's different options that are out there for the district, but we need to just make sure we, we, you know, think outside the box, you know, look at different options that we have in order to provide that safe environment for our students.
Dr. Trevino?
Yes, I will answer that by asking, what has the current board done right now for safety, control in our schools? Actually, all we have for elementary schools is a police officer patrolling our schools, which is fine, but we can go deeper. There's other districts that are going far and above and beyond. Just yesterday, my opponent voted to have the election at two campuses. You don't believe me, watch the report, watch the audio. Putting our children at risk on the day of voting. There's no way to check these people for weapons, there's no way to check these people's licenses. They're going there to vote, but it's also an open opportunity for crime, for someone to get snatched from the streets. So my question is, not what are you going to do, what are you doing right now? What have you done in the last eight years? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez?
Yes. School safety is very important. My husband is, has been with the district for 38 years and he is a security guard and I worry for him all the time because times are changing and we have to roll with the times. Like I said, there has to be a lot of training and I know that they go through rigorous training, but you will never know until it, something happens drastically happens and are we trained for that? We can only pray that things don't get out of hand ever. We need to make sure we have protective measures in place. And if we're looking at maybe possible, and I'm trying to think of the word, if we get, if we get possibly, if we can get, making sure that our security guards are staffed, our campuses are staffed with security guards and we also need to make sure that we have police officers on campus. I believe that that is a good deterrent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Castillo?
So this is something that's on every school district's mind and everybody's trying to figure out. My thought is I think we need to explore the possibility of a Weslaco ISD Police Department. You know, currently, the district allocates around $3.2 million for safety and security. I think we need to analyze to see if, that's a lot of money, right? To see if that's, that money's being expended in a, in a logical way and an efficient way to ensure the safety of all the campuses. But one of the things that I, that I would like to do personally is explore the possibility of a Weslaco ISD Police Department and then explore the possibility of partnerships with the Weslaco PD in the county to ensure the most coverage at all campuses.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Sainz?
What I'd like to see is more parent volunteers. We should get our parents in there, those that have the opportunity to be involved. In San Antonio, when I was there, we had some watchdog dads and what they did was they In San Antonio, when I was there, we had some watchdog dads and what they did was they'd spend one day out of their week going to the school and hanging around. Well, we have single point of entries and then anybody who is not past the credentials can get checked in or be alerted by security quickly. Partner with the Weslaco PD, making sure that we have the ability to contact when a crisis arise and then as well as we are starting, I believe the Crime Stoppers is now going into the schools and making opportunities so that we can report those things at first glance.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. Ms. Quintanilla?
Although nowadays, we think that safety measures and the safety issues came about because of Uvalde, but in fact, these threats and occurrences happened way before Uvalde. I used to be a safety and risk supervisor for a school district and there was a lot of backend work that happened to put protocols and checks and balances into place to know how to react. We all know that everybody's now aware of safety issues because of all those officers that reported to that district and nothing was done, when in fact, behind the scenes, you have to have committees, you have to have chains of command, you have to have the funding, you have to have the protocol, when to notify the parents, how to notify the parents, how to react and how to take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintanilla. Our next question. With mental health concerns and bullying on the rise, what can be done to address this and provide some support and relief to educators, students and families? And I'm going to go ahead and begin on that end with Ms. Quintanilla.
First of all, we need to identify those who have mental health concerns, then set up plans of action to counsel or treat these students and staff. We also have staff that have mental health concerns to get the help they need. As far as bullying, I don't know where Weslaco stands as far as implementing the David's Law, but I know that other districts are very strict about it, but it's very hard to enforce to hold a student liable for a law that they're not even aware that they're violating. So I would like to implement some kind of trainings and to teach the children what this law and why it exists and how they could be held accountable because a bully's not going to stop until somebody stops them. And a lot of times, a student doesn't come forward in fear that nothing will get done and retaliation for reporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
I believe that we can address this by identifying, building better programs to identify and train the professionals and the students through workshops, giving them an avenue to report this anonymously so that they can have the ability to identify things that, crises that began before, bullying that goes on in the school that they can reach out to somebody, have a counselor, somebody they can trust and then maybe form some peer groups. Maybe the students themselves can have an avenue to talk to each other, express what's going on, furthermore, teach those that are younger than them, giving them, an opportunity to show them that there are ways that they can combat this and that they won't be bullied in schools.
Thank you. Next candidate?
So, one thing that I'd like to do, that I would like to explore with the rest of the board and the administration if I'm elected, is look at the allocation of funding for licensed professional counselors in the district and look at the possibility of implementing some type of wraparound services for all students and staff, including staff, because the last two years, I mean, as everybody knows, have been difficult, especially on teachers. And so, if we're able to provide some type of mental health service to all students and teachers, I think that will be a great benefit to the district, it will help alleviate a lot of these issues that our teachers and students are going through and would benefit our children greatly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
Well, with mental health, with mental health, we have to always be advocates and great listeners towards our students, they're the ones that will let you know what's going on. We have to listen to our students. We also have to provide great counseling services and we also have to make sure that we have people in place to make sure that students have somebody that they can go to, a go-to person. With mental health also, sometimes you just don't see the signs, so you have to pay close attention, you have to make sure that you are observant, especially the adults in the building, in the school buildings, we have to make sure that we are advocates towards our students and make sure that we listen to them. As far as bullying is concerned, we always have to make sure that we have something in place to make sure that the students understand that bullying, we can't be doing it. It would be nice for us to have the high school students mentor the younger elementary students and have some type of mentorship program like that. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. Next candidate?
You know, we're talking about what we can do to help our students with social, emotional and the state of Texas has created the positive character traits for all grade levels, but the question is here, we don't have enough counselors. At the high school level, you have, you know, the superintendent yesterday said 350 per student, that's not true, per counselor, that's not true. Go into our elementary schools, how many kids do you have, how many counselors do you have? How many of those counselors are able to support our kids? If you have one counselor and 800 kids, how are you going to make that happen? And then on the second token, you have our superintendent using profanity cursing out our counselors, our most precious people. So I think it starts at the top, you know, and we need more counselors, we need more funding. Once we have that, then we can come up with an actual plan to help our children and it's all connected also to safety, they're all both interconnected and my question is to you, is what is the current board doing about that right now as we speak, not in the future, right now? Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
In regards to mental health, and I think it starts with removing that stigma of, you know, not wanting to speak out or ask for help and I think, you know, in providing, you know, training and classes for our students, for our educators, you know, we want to remove that stigma so that, you know, they can get the help that they need and we can offer the services that are needed to help them through the stress, the stressors of their daily lives there. In regards to bullying, you know, bullying is definitely something that, you know, is a big problem in certain areas and we need to definitely, you know, make sure that we have consequences and follow through, you know, with whatever punishment there might be for people who are students who are bullying other students there.
Thank you. Thank you candidates for your responses. Next question. Retaining good teachers is a challenge. As a school board member, what can be done to make certain good teachers don't leave the district? Mr. Rodriguez?
So, for that question, you know, the easy answer is, you know, high pay, high benefits or good benefits, which is definitely at the priority and at the top of the list to retain our good teachers and our educators. But, you know, aside from pay and benefits, you know, something that wouldn't cost, you know, too much is just valuing our teachers, appreciating their work, showing them and supporting them in any way possible so that they can do the job that they need to do in educating our students and to make them the most successful students that they can
Thank you. Dr. Trevino?
Again, it goes back to what is our school board doing right now to keep teachers? And so the reality is, the reality is that our classrooms are busting at the seams, our district has waivers, middle school and high school with 30, 40 students. Why can't we give our teachers a raise? You know, as you know, and if you go back and look at the videos and the meetings from August, teachers have been underpaid for the last eight years and they are still there in the classroom teaching our children, teaching your children and they will only be compensated for four years. So any teacher from here, who's going to want to stay? And they're still staying because that's how much they're committed to our children. But it starts again, what are we doing? Not what are we going to do, what are we doing right now at this moment to keep our teachers here? And I know it's uncomfortable for some of you, you know, that are moaning and making noises, but I get it, the truth hurts and it's uncomfortable, but that's why you need board members that are going to be here and truly advocate for teachers.
Thank you. Next candidate?
In order to retain teachers, you have to, of course, give them good pay and good benefits. You also need to let them teach. A lot of the times, we don't, because we overload them with extra duties, extra duties that they don't need. Me, as a former teacher, I recall having to do a lot of extra stuff that wasn't not needed because I needed to teach or, and also, we also have to have good professional development for these teachers. Do not overload them with professional development that doesn't do anything for them. They need, you need to also ask the teachers what kind of professional development that they want for themselves, for professional growth. You cannot just assume that they're going to a one size fits all. Every teacher has a different need and we need to make sure that we are, making sure that we pay attention to that. And also, we also need to give them opportunities to advance. We all, we need to make sure that our teachers have an opportunity to advance and do something different and not just pick the same people over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next candidate?
So, I think it is simple and I think it's three things. You got to pay them more, you got to leave them alone and you have to respect them. So, in reviewing the budget and it's function by function, Weslaco ISD spends $8 million on professional development, a neighboring district spends three, that's double the size of Weslaco ISD. So my thought is, let's cut that to three or around there and use that $5 million to pay the teachers more and leave them alone and respect them. So, that's my thought.
Thank you for your response. Next candidate?
I think better teacher recognition, I think we can incentivize our teachers, we can be creative in the way we pay them, we can take those teachers that have done really well in their classes and have done well in their schools and use those teachers to help lead our workshops for the teachers and then have, on those professional staff development days, use those teachers to teach what they've learned or what they're using and then incentivize them by, through those workshops.
Thank you for your response. Next candidate?
Yes, what I want to say is, coming from a family of teachers, my mom has six siblings that are retired teachers and all my life, I grew up hearing the good and the bad and the ugly and I want to say that the difference of what I see in here still is back then, each teacher had a teacher aide, right? And then it went to one teacher aide per three classes and now it's one teacher aide per wing, right? So the teacher needs to make copies, she's got to do them on their own time. If they've got to step out to the restroom, do it in your break or your conference and that kind of lowers our morale, but then again, we can wish for all we want, at the end of the day, if we don't have the funding, then we can't hire that help for the teachers and that all starts in the budgeting process. Most of the funding for those teacher aides would come out of the local tax funding and that's where we need to take a look at the staffing, where they're needed, where there's too much staff and where we can find those funds. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to thank all the candidates for their responses to the questions. We're going to go ahead and move on to the closing statements. I just want to remind the candidates that you have two minutes for your closing statements and I'll go ahead and begin here with Dr. Rodriguez.
Once again, thank you, thank you to the chamber for putting this event together. As you can see, you know, my approach to this has always been positivity, moving forward, looking at the future and I think, you know, we have a board right now that has those vision, that vision, those goals and I'm honored to have served on this board for the past five years. I hoped, and I hope that I will continue to have your trust and support so that I can continue to serve in this capacity. You know, and I would like to, you know, wish the best of luck to all the candidates, no matter what the outcome of this election, I will continue to support students, staff and my community. Again, my name is Dr. Jaime Rodriguez and I'm seeking reelection for Weslaco ISD Place Four and I want to thank everyone for attending tonight.
Dr. Trevino?
Well, if anybody is the queen of optimism, I would say it's me, but I'm also very much into realistic measures and the reality. And the reality is, whether it hurts you or doesn't hurt you, whether it affects you or not, has nothing to do with friendship or family, it has to do with in the last two terms, our Weslaco ISD school board has failed us, okay? And those of you that don't believe me, just remember me in 2023 when your taxes go up because of all the misappropriation of funds that have happened. Think about this when you look at the high interest loans that we're paying as a district, when grievances have not been heard, they've been covered up, when we have not enough counselors in our school, there's not enough safety measures taken. It's not about being a good friend on the board, it really isn't and, and yes, there are good people on the board, there are, but there's a difference between being on the board and serving, it's like being in the military. You know, are you able to defend your country and defend yourself or are you just going to let somebody come in and take over? And that's why I'm running. So, as a parent of a child right now in our schools, I see everything that's happening and I know you guys laugh when I say, go back and look at the videos, but I do challenge you to go back and I challenge you to go back and read the report, it has all the information, it has all the names, it has everything that my opponent, who I believe is a kind person, a respectful person, has voted in ways that I believe and are on that audit that are not correct, okay? So I think eight years is enough, thank you so much for your service and I think that five years, I stand corrected. If you haven't done anything in five years, what are you going to do in the next four? So I say that with all due respect and everybody here has a choice and thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Trevino. Mrs. Sanchez?
So you have heard from all the candidates in Place Five, let me tell you why I'm your candidate. Not only have I taught your children, I'm a product of Weslaco, I graduated from Weslaco. I have also lived in Weslaco all my life, I'm a third generation Weslaco native, my children attended Weslaco, they all graduated from Weslaco, I paid taxes in Weslaco, I taught some of your children, I have the best interest for you all, I will work hard for you. I also have to admit that my husband has 38 years and with me and him are a team, we talk about the students here in Weslaco and we want nothing but positive things to happen to Weslaco, like in Weslaco. And so, what I want to say is, I'm an advocate for all children, all students, I'm an advocate for young adults as well. I believe that all students, the goal is to get them to graduate, but I also believe that all students, some students, life happens and they can't graduate. I want to start seeing students probably go into a GED program. Like I said, I work for Region One currently, we do offer free GED classes, we want to make sure that students go to higher education and that's what I'm going to be advocating for. Not all students are one size fits all, we all want them to go to college, yes, but we also have to be realistic, we need to make sure that our students have another option and if it's not, if it's not going through college, we have to make sure that we provide skills for the students to be ready in the workforce. This is what we are here, to learn, to teach them to be successful adults. And so with that said, I thank you and I want you to, not to forget, to vote for me, Paula Matas Sanchez for Place Five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanchez. Mr. Castillo?
So, you guys have seen all the candidates tonight, you guys are spoiled, you have great choices in making a determination with respect to who's going to be your next trustee. So, but I guess give me the time to separate myself from the pack. So my experience is my knowledge, I've been a trustee before, I've served as a trustee for five and a half years, the only reason I didn't serve again is because I was in law school and then I graduated law school, went back to serving kids and advocating for kids every day as an attorney. My experience is professional and personal, you know, my parents are lifelong educators, my dad retired as a superintendent, my mom is a high school principal, I've been around this my whole life, so much so that even when I became an adult, I stayed around it, I had a choice and I stayed in this. I had a choice, and I stayed in this profession because I love it. And so given that opportunity, I think all the knowledge and experience that I have gained could really benefit Weslaco ISD. Again, like I said earlier, Weslaco ISD is right on the verge of being great. They're rated an 89 on their accountability. One point away from being an A. Finances, they're rated an A in their first report. Tax rate, lowest in the county, by the way, which is interesting, under a dollar. So I think just with a little bit of direction, a little bit of goal-setting, and a governance framework, the board can really focus on what's important, and that's student outcomes and student achievements. And if given the opportunity, you guys would allow for me to continue my life's work and do something that I love and continue to serve the children of Weslaco and the state? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castillo. Mr. Sines?
So I'd like to start off with, these are all great ideas we got from everybody on the board. Listening to everybody speak here, wonderful ideas, wonderful ways that we can move Weslaco forward. If I'm elected, I intend to work with everybody on the board and making, to rebuild the trust within Weslaco and the district, within the board and the district. And then if we have, if we have a way that we can make things better, that we together work on the ways to make it better, not to separate ourselves, not to pull ourselves apart, but to be one district for the community. And if elected, I appreciate everyone's support for Place Five.
Thank you, Mr. Sines. Ms. Quintanilla?
Yes, I just want to say I have two number ones on my list. And number one is the students, and number one are the teachers. As much as we can sit here and say, "Well, we can do this, we should do this," at the end of the day, it's all about the funding. I'm not sure how much of the community out there is aware that Weslaco ISD runs on a $200 million budget, and 83-point-something percent is salaries. So when you break down the money, as far as the tools needed per campus, where are these 180-some-million dollars going for salaries? Are these positions needed? Are you overworking somebody else who should have help? And these are things that we need to look at. And if elected, these are the things that I want to look at. I also want to stress how I've been on the inside. I know what to say when the community or board members ask questions. You don't elaborate, you just answer the question and nothing else, because the more you say, the more questions the board could ask or the community. And I can tell you that at the end of the day, most of the money that comes in the district is already earmarked as far as what you can use it for and what you can't. And the very few, I think it's about $25 million that we do have that goes to MNO, which is maintenance and interest on the bonds and on loans that they take out. So when you look at the money, at the end of the day, you don't have that much wiggle room to use that local money to help out, to get teacher aides or to hire additional staff to support the teachers. And if it's not being used to improve the quality of the education of the students or improving the teacher morale, then what are these positions, what is that money being used for? What kind of positions is that money being used to pay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintanilla. At this time, I'd like to thank all of the candidates for participating in the forum. I'm going to go ahead and turn the mic over back to Mrs. Garza.
Thank you, Ms. Mora, and thank you again to all of the candidates for taking time to be here and share with us your platform on the questions that were asked this evening. I do want to also thank all those who joined us this evening, and I do want to say a special thank you to our chamber members and to our board, who are the reason why we're able to host these events. You may look at other communities, and they may not host events like this, but because of our chamber members, we're able to host these forums and bring this information to you. And so we're very grateful to our business community here in Weslaco and to all of the members of our community. I also would like to thank Weslaco ISD K. West, their team, for being amazing and streaming this, making it available online for those who weren't able to be here with us today. And again, I want to thank all of you for being here. Most importantly, we hear all this information, and you interpret it, but the next step is to vote. And so please make sure that you show up to the polling sites when it's time. The reason we do these events is to make you a more informed voter so that when you go to the polling site, you know who you're voting for. You have a face to a name. And so please note that early voting begins October 24th and ends November 4th. The polling will start at 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and we are a voting site here in this facility that you're in today. It will continue on Sunday, October 30th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, October 31st, November through November 4th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and then of course, Election Day, Tuesday, November 8th, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It's very important that each of you go and vote and exercise the rights that we have. Again, thank you to all of our candidates and your willingness to be here today and share with us your platform. We appreciate all of you. Thank you to our chamber members, our business community, and the audience who's here today. We do have a forum to follow for Places Six and Seven, so we hope that you do stick around to hear from the additional candidates also running for Weslaco ISD School Board. And again, thank you so much for being here. I would like to ask our candidates to stick around for a minute as we take a group photo, and then we'll close up. Thank you very much, everybody, we appreciate your time.